At this time, we're going to do things a little out of order. Probably my mistake for not starting the meeting on time, but we will have, we'll do the pledge first with Liam Venky of the Talmage Elementary School. So if you would please come and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Ken, would you come lead us in the prayer?
Certainly. On behalf of the First Apostolic Church of Talmage, we want to just extend thanks to all of you for your service and sacrifice to make our city great. May we bow our heads. Lord, we give thanks for this day, your bountiful blessings that have been bestowed upon us in this city. We pray, Lord, going forward, that your wisdom would bring impartation to each and every one of these council members. We give thanks for them and their dedication and their service. We pray that you strengthen their hands, undergird them and guide them, Lord, in all the decisions of weight, God, and even the minor things. We just pray that you give them wisdom and strength and we ask that your blessing and favor upon our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. So we would like to thank Boy Scout Troop 412 from the city of Talmage for presenting the colors. And again, thank you for doing that. And you can exit as you would normally would. For those that are live streaming this evening, this is live TV. And so we went a little bit out of order. It is now 7:02. I'd call our regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. It is September 28th, 2023. We've had the pledge, we've had the prayer. And again, thank you to Troop 412 for doing that for us. And we will now go to roll call with Mrs. Burton.
Becky Allman.
Here.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Adam Bosick.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Carol Kilway.
Here.
Dennis Lowry.
Here.
Craig Cissick.
Here.
So we are all present this evening. Item four, correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept, adopt the minutes from September 14th.
So moved.
Mrs. Kilway, seconded.
Second.
By Mr. Cissick. Any discussion on the minutes? Mr. Bolus?
Yes, I just had one observation. On page 10 of the minutes, it indicates that I had two questions from last meeting specific to ordinance 2023-77. I had made a couple of recommendations regarding the requesting of a comp board meeting, which were in the now tracked version of the ordinance, but it's not reflected in the minutes.
The minutes are cursory and not verbatim, but would you like those added to the minutes?
Mostly the acknowledgement. It skips the entire conversation.
How would you like it to be worded?
I would have to go back to the tape, but just an acknowledgement of the recommendation.
We will hold the minutes?
Okay, yeah. Whatever you feel your recommendation should be.
Well, if you don't want us to adopt them as they are and you want to amend it, but you don't have an amendment, then we would need to hold them.
So.
It's not a problem.
Point of order, he doesn't have to, he can vote no.
No, yeah, you could vote no.
Again, it was just, I'm looking at the bottom of page 10 where it says, "Those were my two questions," but there's no indication of anything that I actually said. So that was, that would, so I guess the statement that was made, if that could be added to the minutes, then I'm glad to vote yes on it.
All right. Point of order, Mrs. Raver.
So if you have a proposal of how you'd like, what wording you'd want for the amendment, you can make that proposal, like you can add, you can say that from the floor. If not, we can hold them. Or the other option is to go ahead and take the vote and then you could not do that. But I think probably everyone would be okay with just holding them. And then you can contemplate what language you want to propose for the amendment to the minutes.
Okay. I'll go back and double check. Again, I wasn't opposed to it, I just wanted to make sure that that was included.
It's all good. So we will, we will hold the minutes until our next meeting on October 12th.
Mr. Lowry, do I need to remove my recommendation? Okay, recommendation, I removed my recommendation to accept the minutes.
And we removed the second. Now we need a new motion to hold them?
Mm-hmm.
Need a motion to hold?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to hold, motion seconded. Any discussion on holding the minutes?
Just procedurally, is that just an email? Or is that, how would you like me to deliver those? Or is that next meeting?
At the next meeting. They have to be adopted in a public meeting. So you'd have to come with whatever amendment you'd propose. You could forward that to Mrs. Burton ahead of time and then she could provide everyone a draft version of the amended, a draft amended version, like we do for the ordinances as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just a, I guess it's a point of order, or just a general question, but with the cursory minutes, do we have anywhere that has a full verbatim?
We have the tape.
The tape.
Deal, deal.
The audio is available.
We always have the audio.
Does that get transferred over to a written version?
No.
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 But it is public record.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Burton, call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bosick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cissick.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
All right. We will hold the minutes till our October 12th meeting by a vote of 7 to 0. Item five, financial reports. We have none this evening. Item six, public hearings. We have none. Item seven, community input. We were going to have a presentation from a subcommittee that has a proposal for the challenger field. They were not able to do that this evening, and so that will be done, presented to us on October 12th as well. But we do have Mr. Giddon with us this evening to talk about something that is not on our legislation. So Mr. Giddon, if you please come to the podium. State your name and address, sir.
My name is Lee Giddon. I live at 1602 Timbertop Drive, Talmage, Ohio.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. You have two minutes.
Again, I am Lee Giddon. I am a resident of Talmage Hills. On September 23rd, 2023, I received a letter from the city of Talmage. This letter was a question about a complaint I had on, for my property, trees on my property. Upon receiving the letter, I was surprised and upset with the letter that came. On Monday, the 25th, I came in and talked to Mike Roar. We had a nice conversation in the foyer out there. I don't know if everybody has seen the letter that Talmage Hills received, but the letter states, "We have been made aware of the tree on your property for which you are a registered owner that are either a hazard or nuisance and such in violation of Chapter 1361.2, Planning, Trimming, and Removal Trees and Shrubs of the Talmage Codified Ordinances. These trees, which are the letter referred, are determined to be in violation of the code. Trees must have a clear height of 10 feet above the surface of the sidewalk and 14 feet above the surface of the roadway. Pursuant to the code, Chapter 1361.02, please be advised that you have 30 days from the receipt of this notice to take appropriate action to place on your property in compliance with the city code. Additionally, if no action has been taken within the 30-day notice, the city of Talmage will act for you and correct the existing conditions, and all expenses incurred will be billed to you as the property owner." And it was signed by the, by Mike, and I appreciate it. This is what I learned from the conversation. The city did not file the complaint, because that's the first thing I thought along with a bunch of my neighbors. The complaint came from someone in my allotment. The complaint was for all trees in our allotment. In my opinion, the person that filed this complaint did not want to hire a tree company to trim our trees in our allotment. Therefore, he contacted the city to have him do his job. He did not specify exactly the trees that were in question and the, he didn't want to take the funds out of the HOA. So he contacted the city to have him complete the service. I do believe that was a misuse of the Talmage funds to get us to do, trim the trees. If anybody's been in our allotment, our allotment is kept up very nice, very well trimmed. You won't see hardly anything out there in that area that is subpar. The letter was sent to every house in the allotment. The specific trees in question were not, or were not indicated. City ordinance that regulates the trees was better explained to me for safety purposes for the pedestrians and the roadway hazard for the trucks. There are approximately 100 people that walk in my area in the cul-de-sac. Most of them do not use the sidewalks. They actually walk in the street. There is not anybody that lives in Talmage that's going to touch their head on a tree that's 10 feet high. And more than likely, if you're, if you're, they're cut to eight feet high. This letter has caused many safety concerns for individuals that cannot trim their own trees due to their age or disability. I've talked to several of our residents over there. The trees that are over the road shall be trimmed to 14 feet. That is the national standard. Our ordinance in the city is 10 feet above the sidewalk. Average is eight.
Mr. Giddon, I'm going to give you one more minute.
Okay. The city, they, I do appreciate you letting me take the time here to talk to you about this ordinance. I read the ordinance myself, and I do believe that the ordinance 1361.02 needs to be changed to the wording as follows. Either as eight feet or at a reasonable height. And that would clear up the problems that we're having with this. If you go down through our allotment now, you will see that people that took this letter to heart, and they have destroyed some trees. They have totally messed up what our allotment looks like. And I would invite any of you to drive through our allotment and take a look. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Just to let you know, I also received one of those letters at my house, and I got my little tree trimmer out and I had to do my own tree. So it's, we're not just picking on Talmage Hills, Talmage Highlands and other trees. So, but it is a safety note. I like your advice, and I'll work with the service director and the council folks to see, should it be eight foot on the sidewalk or still the street? The buses go down the roads and they're knocking mirrors off, the trash trucks are breaking hoses, so that's why.
Mayor Klein, I understand that and I appreciate it. But we that live back there, we all learn to live through what we have, and the aesthetics is just as important as everything else. Those trees were made, were planted many, many years ago, and the residences change. I will tell you that most residents didn't even know about this ordinance. I, for one, did not know. I had an ordinance that said, "Keep my trees 10 feet above the sidewalk."
Thanks for coming in tonight.
I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any council members have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple things. Go ahead. So we're kind of making up for past, I guess, maybe errors potentially, because we had a tree committee, and we encouraged development in neighborhoods to plant trees. I don't know when that went away. So it's kind of come full circle, if you will. We also have people that are getting letters to repair their sidewalks at, you know, a cost of like $100. I don't know, Mr. Roar, is it?
Could be more.
Could be more.
That's a conversation I'm coming back to have with you at another time. I didn't want to get the two minutes up.
So that's, that's first class. So, so again, this, we're kind of come full circle. And this tree, the tree committee was, been around for years, and then it went away. And now we're kind of dealing with the repercussions of it. So I hear your plight. I sympathize with you. I just told Mr. Roar that this evening I'm cutting one of my trees down because it's starting to lift the sidewalk.
I have only one more suggestion here that I didn't read. I think when a complaint is called for the whole allotment, I think the city would talk to that one person that's complaining and have him check those trees first and talk to the residents of that allotment before we waste the city's time to go measure trees and send out letters. Because now they got to do it again in 30 days to make sure we did what you guys asked.
Thank you.
Mr. Bosick?
Thank you. I guess from the city's standpoint, when there's a development that has an HOA, what responsibility is the city's and what responsibilities falls on the HOA? In regards to trees, sidewalks?
In that, in that case, it all falls back on the property owner, not the HOA. The HOA would be for the common grounds or for the stormwater areas, but as far as sidewalks and trees in the curb lines, it falls back on the property owners.
So, for example, if the HOA had a policy that had standardized mailboxes throughout, and that mailbox gets destroyed by a plow, we cover a certain amount, correct? Who covers the remaining amount? The property owner or the HOA?
Property.
Property owner. So I guess my question would be, could we change the ruling or change how we word this to, if it's in a subdivision like that, can the HOA take the responsibility of coordinating for a tree service to come through to do the entire development instead of it being put back on the city? Because I agree with what Mr. Giddon is saying, that some of the residents just may not be capable of doing that. So if the city's going to be the middleman, the coordinate with a tree service anyways, why not have the HOA do that? Because they have full communication with that development anyways on a normal occurrence.
I mean, I mean, we could have a conversation with HOA, but the HOA would have to undertake that themselves. Ultimately, when it would come to enforcement, we don't have any ability to enforce against the HOA, because the HOA is not ultimately the responsible party. The responsible party would be the owner. So we could make a suggestion, but then they could decide to do that or not do that.
I think that would be a nice gesture of the HOA to pick up a topic such as that, but it is not an enforcement by the city of Talmage. It'd be the property owners voting at the HOA to elect, to call it an assessment, to put in something to do tree trimming, not.
Right.
Mayor, I would also say, and your memory's probably going to be like mine, over the years. There isn't HOAs. 30 years. Almost every time we entered into an agreement with an HOA that was going to take responsibility to do something in a new allotment, it only worked for the first few years. And then as soon as people move, and as soon as there's turnover on the HOA, almost invariably, the city has had to negotiate taking that responsibility back. Often. Yeah. Only in Talmage Hills. Well, in retention ponds, detention ponds. Do not have an HOA. Right, you're right. But, but, because they tend to go away. They tend to dissolve. But to Mrs. Raver, Mrs. Raver made the most valid point. Ultimately, it's the property owners, you know?
Okay. So I understand it's property owner. And in most cases, in my allotment, we are the owners, but there are more and more rentals popping up in there, too. So we would need to make sure that the actual owner of the house gets that, gets that notification, not the resident of the house.
We send it to both.
Okay.
We make sure we do that.
Because I can see that in my areas, as I said, some of the trees have been, for lack of a better word, heavily injured now.
When they, when, when this process was done a few years ago, where I live in Regency Park, I had three, four neighbors that just took the tree down.
That's what I say, what, to Mike.
They thought it was easier to make one chainsaw cut than a bunch.
Yeah, like I said, I had that conversation with, with Mike the other day, and it was, wasn't quite that, I was a little more colorful than that. Because it was, it was not a fun conversation.
Well, we thank you for coming in. We'll discuss it.
But I do appreciate it, and I would like to know an outcome if we're going to change that to eight feet or a reasonable height, because.
Makes sense.
Again, our neighborhood is not shabby at all, and I do not believe the letter should have came out at all. The person that made the complaint needed to have a conversation.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we are still under community input. If there's anybody else, we just have the Boy Scouts, but anybody else, if you guys would like to talk about anything that is not on our agenda, now would be the time you could do that. You need to, you need to come to, because we record and we like.
I live up in, I'm Mark Grun, live up in Lesser Meadows there, and they took out all the trees in our neighborhood. So pruning would have been desirable, but I get why. It was raising our sidewalks, and people were tripping. I witnessed it. So I love trees. I hated to see them go, but it made sense. So these rules and things we have in place make sense, and I'm glad to see that we have a process for talking about this stuff. I'm glad to see that our boys get to see what the process is. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. All right. Agenda additions, item eight, we have none. We will move on to agenda item nine, reports administrative officers. We will start with the mayor. Thank you very much. I'll start off with electronic recycling, August, or October 14th at 10:00 a.m. at the Talmage Rec Center, 10:00 to 2:00 o'clock. So make sure if you have any electronic pieces, parts that need to be recycled properly, please bring it to the rec center. Ribbon cutting at the dispatch center is next Friday, the 6th, at 11:00 a.m. That's at the Joint Dispatch Center. The go-live will be the 10th of October, and that will start off with the Summit County Sheriff's and the city of Akron. So that's the go-live. Then the following week will be everyone at the Stowe Dispatch Center. And then I think the following week from that, I think it's either Fair Lawn or Cogga Falls. And then by the start of November, it'll be fully functional up there. So it's really, it's coming along extremely well. Economic development portion of it, we made a site visit to S.D. Myers, met with them. They're doing extremely well. They're up to a little over 200 employees, and the inside of that is just doing really well in there, and pretty excited for them. They are always looking for people, employment people to work there. So if you're looking for a job and you desire to be a chemist or checking oils on transformers, give them a jingle. We are working with them, too, on the state of Ohio, some wage stuff, that they can get some grants for training. And so we're, that's coming along well. The, as safety director, working with the police department, they are close to making a offer for their patrol person. And Bo, Captain Chief Bohan is really doing a great job up there and pretty happy with all his activities, putting programs together. And I think you'll see a lot of good stuff come out of that. Working with the fire department, Chief Underwood, his biggest dilemma right now is manpower. The part-time firefighter staff, if anybody, part-timers, anybody listening would like to be a, on a part-time on the Talmage Fire Department, if you have your 240, and that's your fire class rating, if you have those hours in, that, and you're in training to be a paramedic, make an application. And they have notices out in all the hospitals, on websites, social media, word of mouth. We're down to 20 part-time firemen, and our budget and our scheduling is scheduled for 34 part-timers. So you analyze, where are these guys at? And a good thing for Talmage part-timers, most of them are full-time on other departments. And the ones who are not full-time, they're younger ones looking for full-time employment. And everyone's trying to hire firefighters. And the ones who are working on other departments are working so much mandatory overtime, they just can't give us the time that is needed for being part-time in Talmage. So Chief Underwood's making some strategic changes and working on that, but we're definitely working on the schedules on that. The, on, still on the safety side, Mr. Bosick asked at the last meeting to give an update on the, what's going on at the Ritchie Center, talking with Jessica for all the parks. They're, the increased communication between the rec department and all the rentals with the police department is extremely well. They give them the schedules every Friday. The police are making routine drive-throughs at all of the rentals. We did have, during the first couple months of all of this, a staff member actually walking through with the tenant and making sure they had any questions and checking with them. And that did go well, except now some staffing issues for the part-time. They were really relying on the police department, and Chief Bohan is working out real well with us and the rec center. Upgraded all the outdoor lighting at the Ritchie Center, increased the rates to non-residents, and more strict monitoring of all their rentals. And cameras will be installed within the next four to six weeks. They're on order, they down at the Ritchie Center. So things are moving along at the, at that aspect of it. As the Director of Administration, Jill is on vacation out in the West Coast. The budget is very close to being completed. We had second rounds with department heads, and we're ready to actually have a printed version of it. Mr. Cissick, would you like a one-on-one coming in?
Sure.
So if we can schedule that. Jill will be back on Monday. Next week sometime, we'll try to set something up on your schedule to go over the budget like we've done in the past. And there's a lot of personnel amendments on there that we can talk about when that comes up. Really, that's all I have. Any questions for the mayor?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just want to thank you, Mayor Klein, for getting answers to that question from the last meeting. So I appreciate that. I'm very convinced as to all the work that you guys have put in with, you know, the staffing, sending the staff through there, and the lighting and the cameras and everything. So I think that's a much-needed improvement down there, just from, you know, not even just a safety standpoint, just for security and peace of mind and being able to look back on something if you needed to.
Yeah, the cameras will have 360 view of the exterior of the Ritchie Center. So the walkway going down the steps into the hole and the back driveway, so we'll be able to see that if anybody falls going down or.
Great. That's great. You had mentioned issues with part-time firefighters trying to find those. Have we looked into or done any kind of study with other departments in the local area about becoming more of a regional-type-based fire department? I know this has kind of been spreading across the country with, with some departments where they will kind of consolidate their services and basically, kind of like our dispatch center, but for our fire department. So has that been something that we?
Oh, that's always been talked about. Actually, when I was probably 30-plus years ago, we talked about a regionalization of safety forces of that. But it's, sometimes it's very difficult conversations. People don't want to give up their domain of fires, but it is definitely, personally, I think in the next 10 to 15 years, I think you'll see a lot of that.
Right.
I think you're going to have to.
I would agree with you on that. I think that that's something that maybe, it seems like Talmage has kind of always been at the forefront of changes like that, so maybe that's something we can start the discussion on and with our surrounding communities. I think that's, that's a much-needed change.
I started working on the Joint Dispatch Center 25 years ago. We finally got there, so there is light at the end of the tunnel.
Well, let's hope it doesn't take that long, Dave.
Right. Manpower will dictate it won't take that long.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else for the mayor? Thank you. Service Director, Mr. Roar?
Yes, good evening. I'd like to start off with a couple.
Yes, good evening, I'd like to start off with a couple of slides for the DD Building. So, 89 East Tower Road, the demolition began, that's aerial view, the C Wing and the B Wing have been demoed. They're, they were gonna do all the wings and now, because they're out of room for stockpiling in the back, they're going to move to the front of the building starting tomorrow and start, that's a picture, one of the first pictures of them cracking at the walls. This is a view from the back with the C and B Wings missing. It's pretty impressive, really, the contractor does a great job picking through and stockpiling each, each of the different materials, so it's pretty neat.
I can, I interrupt you a second.
Sure.
To put it in perspective, way off to the right, that is the ball field in the back, and straight through there, that, with a cursor, I know it's hard to see on that upper picture, but that's the Joint Dispatch Center, just to give you a landmark, because it's hard to tell from that one.
And then, just the 2023 Leaf Program starting, can you go to that link, will that let you in? If you go down there, I don't know if you can do it off of this or not. So, if you go to this link, and it shows the map, so we rotated the sections again, so everybody's not last and everybody's not first, so we rotated. Dave, can you punch in any address? See the, right there, the, see, yep. If you punch in the address, it details your house or wherever you want to see where the leaf collections going next.
Just put a space between the number.
Yep. So, it takes you right to that location, gives you the dates.
Come on, hit the right button.
Gives you the dates for the first pickup and the second pickup, and then it gives you a couple of rules of not putting the leaves in front of fire hydrants and in the ditches and everything else, so, nice map, I'd like to compliment the IT Department for doing that, really, that's good use of the website, so. Anybody got any questions on anything?
That's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything for Mr. Ror? Thank you, Director of Finance, Mrs. Gilbreath.
Good evening, I have nothing to report this evening, but we would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, anything for Mrs. Gilbreath? Mrs. Raiber, Director of Law?
Thank you, no report this evening.
Anything for Mrs. Raiber? Thank you, let's get into our agenda. We will start with Planning and Zoning, Mrs. Kilway.
Thank you, I'll open Planning and Zoning Committee, at first reading, we have Ordinance 2023-82 with Exhibit A and tracked Exhibit A, amending and supplementing Section 1104.O5D Commercial Uses Table and Section 1104.O7E8 Use Regulations Automotive Car Wash of the Talmage Codified Ordinances. We do have a public hearing on this. I'd like to set a public hearing for October 25th at 7:01 p.m. And this is in, in front of Planning and Zoning first. They will do their discussion, make recommendations, and we'll go from there.
Mrs. Kilway?
Yes.
Will it be through Planning and Zoning by our October 12th meeting? So, Mrs., Mrs. Hussing will come in and present to council once that's done, whether you would want her mayor to do it on the 12th or the 25th?
And make sure you look at, there is a lot of tracked version.
The tracked version is on there, and there's a lot of stuff, and it's, she worked extremely hard on it and.
Yes, and she does have a nice PowerPoint too, that she went through with some of us.
Yes.
About it, and it's very well thought out, a lot of discussion was, you know, was made going into this, so I'm sure she will be glad to come and discuss it with us. Okay, is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
At this time, yes.
I just have a question regarding the report that we received. On page number three, there's a map, it talks about the use saturation and location.
Adam, what report are you referring to?
This would be the staff report for the PZ October 5th meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Some of the information that, I just have a question of how or why we included a car wash that was in the Akron area. I mean, it's the only one in there, but out of the six that we have, that's only one. And then, some of the citations that we had in that report are, like I say, they're not relevant, but I question a little bit because they talk about the car wash prices dropped to three, five, and seven. It's a good show that the use has saturated the market, and they referenced the carwash.com website. Just kind of doing a quick look at the car washes in our area. I mean, the lowest Tier One package starts out at $8 for those car washes that are in Talmage, and they go all the way up to $29, so I guess my question would be, like, are we saying that we want to limit the number of car washes based on the prices being low, which shows that the market saturate, saturated?
Mr. Bozick, when you read the actual ordinance, you'll see that that's not even something that's drawn out. We actually decided not to have, like, a limitation on the number, and it's more related to the proximity to the neighbors and the distances and things, so that was discussed, and it's for purposes of discussion, and you can certainly, you know, come to the Planning and Zoning meeting where that will be reviewed, and I'm sure Mrs. Hussing would come and, and touch on those points as well, but when you look at it in total, there's, we ended up not actually moving forward with a strict, like, use saturation-type model.
Okay, so, so in that report, then, are we just striking that from that report, or are we just gonna leave that in there?
No, the report's for informational purposes, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's, I mean, she's provide, she's providing information that she's found, I think was her intent, is to put information out there so that they, they have that to consider, but ultimately, that's not been, that wasn't a key factor, and we looked at it and determined that that wasn't the direction we were gonna go.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is related to the, the noise section of it. I knew it was stated at some point, and I don't recall who it was, but it was at a council meeting, and they were talking about the decibels of one of the car washes, I believe it was the new one up in Brimfield, it was so loud they couldn't hear themselves outside in the parking lot. I frequently go up in that area at all hours of the day and night, and I've yet to experience that. And that's with those vacuum systems running and with the car wash running at the same time. So, I know we outlined some decibel levels, but from my own research, I don't believe there's anything other than what they did cite, which is the OSHA requirement of, I believe it was like 60 decibels if I'm not mistaken, but whatever the number is, do we even know what our current car wash decibels are at this point?
Yes, we do, and we've actually taken registers of those, and they're very loud, and we have those specific things, and then based on the information that she gathered, we did set those, and so we actually have had complaints from the residential neighbors in some of the locations that we have within the city, and so that was really, quite frankly, what brought the concern to.
So, so we have some data that we've collected?
Correct, and again, all that information, I mean, she'll be presenting that information, I think you have it in a PowerPoint or staff thing, and she's just trying to provide information for.
So, I guess that's, that's my question, is if we have that information, wouldn't that be pertinent to being in this report of we've checked all six locations, and here's what the decibel readings are at their current standpoint?
Well, I know she has it for the one that is at, the one that's in Talmage that's adjacent to a residential area.
Okay.
And so, that's, those decibel readings have been taken, and the amount of decibels decided was based on, again, the information that she gathered from
I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just.
What's out there for public consent.
When I'm looking at it, and I'm seeing that we have information in there that's just informational, talking about saturation level, but then the main issue is the decibels, and you say we've taken readings, but, and we have received complaints, as Mrs. Allman falls out of her chair, that we've received complaints, none of that information's in this report, so that's, that's my only concern, is that if, if we're basing a change in this.
I believe some of it's in the PowerPoint presentation, so I don't know what's in the staff report versus the PowerPoint, but both of those things would be presented, and all that information can be reviewed and determined, and then all those factors can be taken into consideration by council with regard to the ordinance, so I would ask that you allow those presentations to occur and get more information, and I'm sure if you have specific questions as to that, I can't speak to why certain things were included and why they weren't in a report that I did not draft, but I'm sure Mrs. Hussing would be happy to answer those for you.
Great, okay, great, thank you, just areas of concern that I was looking at. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bozick, yes, Mr. Bolus?
Just a quick procedural question, once it goes through Planning and Zoning and comes to council, if it is voted upon and goes into effect, does that impact the current car washes, or is that just impacting future businesses?
Current car washes are grandfathered in.
Okay.
When it comes to zoning, zoning applications, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time on this ordinance? Okay, so, we've already set the public hearing, Planning and Zoning will go over it first, and then it'll come back to us, and we will have the PowerPoint presentation, hopefully from Mrs. Hussing. Anything else to come in front of Planning and Zoning at this time? Hearing none, I'll close committee.
Thank you, Finance, Mr. Seesack.
Thank you, I'd like to call Finance to order. We currently have second reading of Resolution 2023-11 Exhibit A, accepting the amounts and rates that's determined by the Summit County Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county fiscal officer, and providing for immediate enactment. I imagine this needs to be done timely.
Yes, I do need this adopted this evening, thank you.
So, can I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-11?
Second.
So, a motion is second to adopt Resolution 2023-11 Exhibit A at second reading. Are there any questions, discussion, explanation?
Just for clarification, this is a standard ordinance that we're required to adopt every year for the Summit County Fiscal Office to collect our property taxes, and it sets the valuations and rates at which they will collect those taxes.
Great, thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Craig Seesack.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
I did not get called.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-11 Exhibit A has been passed by vote of seven to zero. We have Ordinance 2023-81 Exhibit A at first reading, expressing intent to sell unneeded obsolete or unfit vehicles and equipment, providing for immediate enactment. Can I get a motion on this?
Mr. Seesack?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt Ordinance 2023-81 Exhibit A at first reading.
Second.
So, a motion is second to adopt Ordinance 2023-81 Exhibit A. Are there any discussion or questions for the Service Director?
Counselman.
Sir.
Most of the stuff is obsolete snow pile equipment, majority of it is, so.
Great. Any further discussion or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How are we auctioning, are we using the government site again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, hearing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Seesack.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-81 Exhibit A has been passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
We also have Ordinance 2023-83, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement to purchase 892 Northwest Avenue, parcel 60006239, and 6753251 from the Summit County Land Reutilization Corporation, and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This lot is the very last lot on Northwest Avenue, heading towards Barney's Busy Corners. It's that old building that's been vacant for a long time, it went into foreclosure, the land bank finally took it over, and our price to purchase those two parcels, it's in the ordinance, it's a little over $8,000. It's a great thing for us to just eliminate that building, clean up that site, make a better gateway into Talmage, but down in the future, I think somebody will come up with a scheme to make that intersection, never make it a roundabout because of the topoes and the elevations, but I think you'll have something with the state ODOT or AMETs working on that intersection, there's been so many different plans over the years, but this is an opportunity for us at least to clean up a blighted property and to make a green space, a gateway into the city of Talmage from Cogga Falls.
Thank you, any questions on this? Leave it at first reading so we can mull it over a little bit?
Yep.
All right, is there anything else to come before Finance this evening? Hearing none, I will close committee.
Thank you, sir. Let's move to Personnel, Mr. Bolus.
All right, thank you, I call Personnel Committee to order, we are all present this evening. Tonight, at second readings of ordinances resolutions, we have Ordinance 2023-77 Exhibit A, tracked Exhibit A, amended Exhibit A, amended tracked Exhibit A, amending the broadband compensation plan for the non-collective bargaining employees, amending provisions related to the Compensation Board, and providing for immediate enactment. Any discussion amongst council or administration with Ordinance 2023-77 at second reading this evening?
Mr. Bolus?
Yes, Mr. President.
I just want to let council know that I've, I've had some just conversations with the administration, but also had two meetings with Mrs. Strich, and she was, she was very accommodating and explained, explained everything very well, so I would recommend that if any of you have questions, to please reach out to Mrs. Strich.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you to the administration for sending out the information about the point value system that we're using to figure out what band employees will be placed into. And, and maybe things have changed since, since I've, I've no longer at the rec center, but I just know going through some of the part-time workers and going through where they were placed in the grid, in the staffing grid, I'm not quite sure they're in the right spot, but again, I don't know what responsibilities they hold now, as opposed to back then, but I do think maybe there's some better consideration should be given based on years of experience when it comes to total number of years of experience and what point value they receive, because you receive, I don't remember the exact number, but the point value is extremely low for the years of experience, as opposed to somebody that has.
The point value is based on the minimum number of years' experience in the job description, so you can't.
description. So you can't look at the people doing the job, how many years of experience they have. When the jobs are being placed in the point factors right now, it's the minimum. So if you have a job that only requires one to four years, or I don't have it in front of me what the exact numbers are, but the point factors are applied to the minimum required for the job, for somebody coming into the job, brand new.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, from the last meeting when we were talking about this, I believe it was stated that we were using that system to determine whether or not somebody could go out of the band from the comp board.
So then, when you would consider that person you're hiring, say that they...your job requires two years of experience, and they're coming in with 15 years of experience. That's where you then go to the pay scale, and you wouldn't bring them in then at the bottom of the pay scale because you would factor in that additional experience they have. So when you're deciding where to place their pay in that band, then that additional experience comes into play. But the job in and of itself being placed in these bands is looking at the job description and what the minimum required number of years of experience we would require if we hired a new person off the street.
Right. So going back to that point value system, then, for example, years of experience, and I don't have it in front of me, so I'd have to look at it in more detail, but does it state in there for the point values, for somebody who wants to go out of the band based on the comp board, is what you're saying?
No.
Or...I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. That wants to go to the upper tier of...
Of that band.
That band. That's what I meant to say. Does it specifically state in there, if you have X number of years, then you will qualify for the high end of the band, or if you have X number of years, you will be placed in the middle band?
No, that's an administrative decision.
So it's strictly...
That's an administrative hiring decision based on budget numbers and how much authority they have to spend.
All right, thank you. That was my long way of getting there, but thank you.
Yeah, good.
All right, thank you. And procedurally, is this required to go through readings? Can you remind me?
You gotta adopt the amendment if you choose to.
Okay.
Tonight, it would be the amendment.
Right.
It would be at second. It stays at second through...with an amendment, and then you would have it go to third reading.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the amendment?
Mr. Bolus?
Yes.
I move to amend ordinance 2023-78.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Okay, I'm actually looking at the ordinance, and it says 78 on the actual ordinance in front of me.
Let me pull it up.
We have three ordinances.
Yeah.
Two tracked.
I've been on it.
This one.
Okay, sorry. Wrong one, then. Move to amend ordinance 2023-77.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 2023-77 at second reading. Please call the roll.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
All right. The ordinance 2023-77 is amended at a vote of seven to zero, and at this time, that'll stay at second reading. Moving on to ordinance 2023-78, tracked, amended, amended tracked, establishing the number of non-collective bargaining employees by department and position pursuant to RC 731.08, and providing for immediate enactment. Are there any questions or discussion for Council or Administration on ordinance 78 this evening?
The only amendment on this was at the request of the President of Council to change the deputy clerk of council. That's the only change on this one, so that's...Dennis, I don't know what you want to say.
So Mrs. Conti, with discussion with Mrs. Stritch, will be raised to ban four from a three. On the low end of four.
Well, the ban.
The ban.
It's not...don't talk about salary. It's the whole range in the salary.
Yeah.
It's what ban?
Can we get a reasoning for that?
Yeah, because of what she needs to be able to do in the absence of the clerk of council, is basically act as the clerk of council. And so Mrs. Stritch agreed that that position should be elevated.
Okay.
I agreed with that.
All right. Can I get a motion to amend ordinance 2023-78?
I'd move to amend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 2023-78 at second reading. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-78 is now amended by a vote of seven to zero, and will stay at second reading. Ordinance 2023-79, implementing wage adjustments for certain non-collective bargaining employees, appropriating necessary sums, and providing for immediate enactment. Any questions or discussion on ordinance 2023-79? That's at second reading.
Mr. Bolus?
Yes, Mr. President.
I would ask Mrs. Raiber if this should...we should still just keep this as a companion to the other two ordinances?
Yes, please. Yes. And then also, and I'm sorry, Mr. Bolus, if you already mentioned it, but we do have a public hearing on 2023-78, which I know you said it last meeting, but just for the record, to reiterate that, that will be at the next, the October 12th meeting. And Civil Service did here...did review the ordinance and did make a recommendation to council to adopt.
All right. And so again, for the record, we will have a public hearing on this next meeting on October the 12th, and that was set at 7:01?
Yeah, on ordinance 78.
Okay, on ordinance 2023-78. All right, we'll keep ordinance 79 also at second reading, so there'll be companions. Any other questions or comments or concerns for Personnel Committee? All right, thank you. I'll close committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus. Safety, Mr. Bozak?
Thank you. I call Safety Committee open. We're all present this evening. We currently do not have any legislation in front of us. Open it up to council for any input. Hearing none, Administration? No. I just want to make a comment that obviously thank the Administration for those areas that you discussed earlier this evening, those safety measures that we put into place. And I just want to give a kudos to the men and women on our Police and Fire Department. I know we've been extremely busy lately, so much so that a few of the individuals that I normally talk to on a normal basis, I haven't been able to, just because they've been so busy. So I know that they're working very hard, and our community appreciates them. So thank you to them. Hearing nothing else for Safety Committee, I will close the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bozak. Community issues, Mrs. Gutman?
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. I will open Community Issues. We have at second reading ordinance 2023-80, authorizing the mayor to receive funding from the Community Development Block Grant Program for the Minor Home Repair Program, and enter into all necessary agreements, appropriating funds, and providing for immediate enactment. Would anyone like to say anything further on this?
This can go to three readings. It's okay. But we did receive a grant that will go to minor home repairs. We're not ready to enter into the contracts with the property owners that are receiving this, but...
Okay. I believe at the last meeting that someone's still going to come speak on this at a future meeting.
Not just this, but on the policies and some procedures. Holly Miller from the County Executive's Office was scheduled to come in and speak, but we'll just get her back on the schedule.
Okay.
Of all the programs that they have to offer, not just this one.
Okay, great.
Mary, I got an email. They'll be here October 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have any further discussion on this for now?
I would ask, so we'll be at third reading on the 12th, but Mrs. Miller's presentation wouldn't really have any impact on it.
It has nothing to do with this at all.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll leave this at second reading. Is there anything else for Community Issues tonight?
Homecomings tomorrow night.
Homecomings tomorrow night.
Yes, of course. Okay, then seeing nothing, I'll close Community Issues.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutman. Public Service, Mrs. Allman?
I call the Public Service Committee to order. We have no legislation before us. Council or Administration, do you have anything for the Public Service? Seeing none, I close committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allman. Reports of special committees. I have nothing this evening. Mr. Bolus, do you have anything?
Just that I sent out the viewership numbers for the last three meetings.
Thank you. Announcements, I have none since we already said homecomings tomorrow. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mrs. Kilway?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Allman. Any discussion on adjournment? Mrs. Burton, please call the roll.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes. Thank you. It is 8:02. We are now adjourned. I do want to thank the Boy Scouts for coming in again. Thank you very much.